Good evening. I'll now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, February the 7th, 2022, and we will begin our meeting with prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Jones.
It is my privilege to have with me this evening my pastor, Dr. Reverend Kristin Bennett-Marble from West Morris Methodist Church. Her and her husband John have ten children. She also chairs the African immigrant ministries. And one thing that I love about my pastor is she's very community oriented. She so cares about our community. This past week, she opened up West Morris Street Church to help the homeless when the temperatures dropped. She had it as an emergency warming shelter. She had them there to spend the night. She took care of them. They had food. And the other thing that's so wonderful about Pastor Kristin is when we, as a council, I love to bring our community here to the council and see that connection. With the Crime Prevention Grants, she was one of the recipients. And it was a vision that she had had, and we were able to see it come to life and see real good work happen in our community. So I'm just honored tonight that she's here to share a prayer with us.
Thank you. Would you pray with me? Loving and holy God, we come to you tonight, seeking your wisdom and your grace. God, I pray that for each of these civil servants here that you would bless them, that you would give them insight and wisdom far beyond their abilities. God, I pray that you would bless their families, that you would return the time that they spend here to them tenfold as they return home and spend time together with loved ones. God, as we look to you, the ultimate servant, teach each one of us what it means truly to serve one another. And in the words of Maya Angelou, might we do the best that we can until we know better, and when we know better, might we do better. God, I pray that you would transcend any divisiveness, but instead teach us what it means to partner together with one another, finding shared principles. God, I think of the words of Desmond Tutu, "My humanity is bound up in yours, for we can only be human together." And God, I just pray that this City County Council would operate out of that mindset. God, give each one here a passion for the people that they represent and serve. Help them to follow your example as a great teacher and one who served and loved not just the important ones, but the lost, the least, and the last. God, I pray that if there's selfishness or fear that stands in the way from making the right decisions, that you would transcend that. And you would remind us, in the words of Nelson Mandela, that it is only free, we can only be free, not when we just cast off our own chains, but when we live in a way that respects and enhances the freedom of others. God, as we begin this meeting with so many things on the agenda, so many important decisions to be made, I pray that your spirit would be here amongst each person. And as I close in prayer, Jesus, I just use the words of Martin Luther King. Oh, God, help us to live our lives and in all of our attitudes to work out this controlling force of love, this controlling power that can solve every problem that we confront in all areas. Grant that all will come together and discover that as we solve the crises and solve these problems, let us join together in a great fellowship of love and bow down at the feet of Jesus. Give us this strong determination. In the name and the spirit of this Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are twenty-five members of the council present. We have no guests this evening who are already not part of the agenda, but I do believe we have one member of the mayor's new intern staff. Just want to recognize that individual. If that individual would please stand. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, February 7, 2022, at 7:00 PM, the purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, a call is to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, January 14, 2022, a copy of a notice of public hearing on Proposals Number 7 and 8, 2022, said hearing to be held Monday, February 7, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances. General ordinance numbers one and two, general resolutions, ordinance numbers, I'm sorry, general resolution numbers one and two, special resolutions numbers one through four, Joseph H. Hogsett, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent? The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for January the 10th, 2022. Do I have consent? We'll now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, and special resolutions. And this first item on our agenda is Proposal Number 25, which recognizes Reese Hamilton for his commitment to creating opportunities to promote peace in his community.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors, one night, when I was watching the evening news, a story about an interesting young man came across the screen. The story told of a young man who had been seeing what has been happening in our city and was so concerned about it, he decided to do something about it. But this is not the first time young Mr. Hamilton has been moved to do something to make his community a better place. A simple Google search will yield several stories about him answering a call to step up, to act, and to make a difference. Most recently, the story on Fox 59, told of Mr. Hamilton's current plan to host a stocking stuffer drive to provide some small needed items and some things just to make people smile and leave them on the doorsteps of someone needing cheered up. When asked why he was doing this, he said, "I want to bring back some positivity from the negativity. I've seen murders and murders after murders on the news, so it's time to change." Already, I was seeing a remarkable young man. At the end of the interview, Mr. Hamilton said, "People are needing hope. People have no hope for the city. People just don't care, which we need to care. This is our city, and we are going to take it back." So I decided to take him a few items for his drive, and after meeting Mr. Hamilton in person, I knew this was a story that people needed to hear. And he needs to know how extraordinary he is and how much we appreciate him. And so, Mr. President, I have here City Council's Special Resolution Number 4, 2022, a special resolution recognizing Reese Hamilton. Whereas Reese Hamilton was born on June 28, 2008, in Indianapolis, he is a student at Center for Inquiry 70, where he shows excellent leadership skills among his fellow students. And whereas, after seeing police officers in his neighborhood due to a crime committed, Reese realized that the violence was getting closer to home. He was afraid of the violence that was occurring in the city, but at just eight years old, Reese knew that he could do something to change it. And whereas, in 2016, Reese wrote a letter to Mayor Hogsett explaining his concerns, and together, they worked on a plan to help children feel safe. And whereas, in October of 2016, Reese led his first peace march through his neighborhood, where various community leaders, including Mayor Hogsett, joined him. And whereas Reese's annual efforts to include a bike ride for peace, two giveaways at Military Park for those in need, a Thanksgiving giveaway, and his most recent act of kindness has been collecting stocking stuffers for homeless people and neighbors in need. And whereas Reese has received support from his community to continue his work in the city and, most importantly, support from his family, who is here today, including his mother and his big brother. And whereas Reese Hamilton's involvement and dedication have been recognized by numerous news networks and awards, today, he is celebrated for his work in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana, Section 1, the City County Council recognizes Reese Hamilton for his willingness to serve the city and wishes him success in his future endeavors. Section 2, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has done. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is an honor for me to present this remarkable young man who lives in the Brightwood community, which is in District 17. I was really surprised and impressed with him from the moment I saw him on the TV and then again, once I met him at the Brightwood Shopping Center at 25th and Sherman. And so I felt it was really important to recognize him, but also for you to have the opportunity to hear from him directly. So without further ado, Mr. Reese Hamilton.
Okay. Okay. I don't know what to say, to be honest. Kind of nervous, shaking a little bit. But the reason why I do this is because I feel like I can't be safe in my own neighborhood. You know, I hear gunshots on the next street almost every night. Sometimes I'm scared to go outside and walk around my neighborhood, and I feel like kids shouldn't have to do that anymore. It's been 271 murders last year and just 18 this year. And it makes, it unsettles me a little bit. We shouldn't be killing each other. We should be holding each other up, building each other up, building our community back. Why I give back to the homeless is, one of the reasons is because I know somebody that's homeless, and so I know a lot of people that's homeless. And they come to me, sometimes they ask me for food, money. I see it all the time on the streets. So I give back because that's what I want to do. That's why I want to make change. People that don't have homes should have homes. That's the reason why I give back. Jesus. Is it hot in here?
It is hot.
Okay. Real slow.
That's it. That's great. Thank you.
So when you go back into your districts, make sure you're looking out for the Reese Hamilton in your neighborhoods.
Month.
This is City County Special Resolution Number 6, a special resolution recognizing Black History Month. Whereas Africans were first brought involuntarily to the shores of the United States as early as the 17th century. And whereas, by 1827, six years after the founding of Indianapolis, 55 of the city's 1,066 residents were black, intertwining black history and Indianapolis's history since the city's earliest days. And?
Whereas people, Black Americans, have survived enslavement, lynch mobs, segregation, legalized discrimination, and denial on the basic and fundamental rights of citizenship, nonetheless secured their freedom and have risen to serve Indianapolis and state of Indiana and the United States at the highest levels of government, business, academia, philanthropy, and the military. And whereas, the contributions of Black Americans from all walks of life throughout the history of the city may have made unforgettable marks on Indianapolis and the world as artists, scientists, educators, entertainers, entrepreneurs, athletes, thought leaders, faith leaders, political, and governmental leaders. Whereas Black residents of Indianapolis have been essential to the city's growth, vibrancy, and success on the world and stage.
Whereas those leaders have included the likes of Madam C.J. Walker, Marshall Major Taylor, Freeman Ransom, Noble Thistle, Wes Montgomery, Father Boniface Harden, Sister Edna May Barnes Martin, Mari Evans, Oscar Robinson, George McGinnis, Angela Brown, Kenneth Babyface Edmonds, Cleo Blackburn, Amos Brown, Julia Carson, and too many more to name.
Small type, everybody. Whereas Indianapolis has been the backdrop to important developments in Black history, including being home to one of the most active stops on the Underground Railroad at the historic Bethel A&amp;M Church, the 1895 founding of the Indianapolis Recorder, the fourth oldest surviving black newspaper in the United States, the rise of the Indiana Avenue as a national destination for jazz musicians and singers, hosting and winning the first game of the inaugural season of the Negro National Baseball League played on May 2, 1920, at Washington Park in Indianapolis. And whereas...
In spite of these notable individuals, accomplishments, and places many Black Americans in Indianapolis and elsewhere have lived, toiled, and died in obscurity, never achieving the recognition they deserve, but still paving the way for future generations to succeed. And whereas...
In the face of injustices, people of goodwill and of all races in Indianapolis and the United States have distinguished themselves with a commitment to the noble ideas of which the United States was founded and have fought courageously for the rights and freedom of Black Americans and others. Now therefore...
Therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana, Section 1, this council acknowledges that all people of Indianapolis and of the United States are the recipients of the wealth of history provided by Black culture. Section 2, this council likewise recognizes the significance of Black History Month as an important opportunity to commemorate the tremendous contributions of Black Americans to the history of our city, state, and nation. Section 3, the council encourages the celebration of Black History Month to provide a continuing opportunity for all people in our community to learn from the past and understand the experiences of the Black Americans who have shaped Indianapolis. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu. And Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-3-4-14. And, Mr. President, we so move.
A motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sampson Livingston is an Indiana history lover from Indianapolis. Sampson runs a venture called Through Two Eyes, through which he has been hosting historical walking tours throughout Indianapolis, which is also his hometown. He has led over 200 tours, historical walking, biking, and trolley tours throughout Indy and has gained national attention for his work. Mr. Sampson Livingston. You want to come forward, please, Sampson?
Hey, I appreciate that, and you guys recognizing Black History Month. I love Indiana history. If you look at my business card, I brought a few because I know I'd see some new faces. I describe myself as a lover of Indiana history. And when you're a lover of Indiana history, you're a lover of all history, no matter who that is, whether that's Black, White, Gay, Trans, Latino, it doesn't matter. I tell people to look for the history that's right under their feet, and you won't be able to overlook Black history. We do that in Indianapolis. Just like you said earlier, there's no record of Indianapolis without Black people in it. So no matter where you are, anytime, if you look for the history there, you'll find Black people there. You will find a diverse Indianapolis with a strong history that's going to lead to a strong future. So as I lead people through Indianapolis, talking about the history here in my hometown, inviting people from all over the country to come here, we celebrate history from all cultures. So I'm excited that this month, we're recognizing and celebrating Black history as an opportunity to educate people over the obstacles that these heroes have had to overcome through this journey. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, I just wanted to acknowledge my Black History, my African garb that I have on, so I just wanted to show that to you. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 78, which honors and raises awareness
Good evening. A special resolution recognizing Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Whereas dating violence is defined as a pattern of assault and controlling behaviors used by one person against another in order to gain or maintain power and control in a relationship. Whereas dating violence is very common, especially among teens and young adults. One in three teens in the U.S. will experience physical, sexual, or emotional abuse from someone they are in a relationship with.
Whereas Indiana faces higher than average rates of teen dating violence. One in 10 Houston teens face physical violence in their relationship, and one in eight have experienced sexual violence in their relationship. And whereas teen violence dating, teen dating violence can display itself in multiple forms, teens facing violence in their relationships may be subject to physical, sexual, psychological violence, including stalking and...
Whereas violence and aggressive behaviors in adolescent intimate relationships can create unhealthy relationship patterns, which often continue throughout life. Supporting the development of healthy, respectful, and nonviolent relationships can help reduce the occurrence of teen dating violence and prevent its harmful effects. And whereas during the pre-teen and teen years, it is important for youth to begin learning the skills needed to create and maintain healthy relationships.
Whereas teen dating violence impacts youth and families of all backgrounds across Indianapolis. And whereas placing value and importance on local organizations that work to educate and assist youth about the signs and effects of unsafe relationships is crucial to ensuring the safety of our teens.
Whereas the Marion County Prosecutor's Office recognizes this social problem and has secured a multi-year public grant to provide a dedicated deputy prosecutor to educate youth on the issue and prosecute related cases. And whereas February is National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and because the residents of Indianapolis of all ages are deserving of a healthy family and partner relationships, now therefore...
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, Section 1, the City County Council recognizes the vital role it plays in supporting the well-being of our city's youth population with appreciation, with appropriate activities and programs aimed at preventing and recognizing all forms of dating abuse. Section 2, the council similarly recognizes the toll that dating violence takes on youth and females in Indianapolis and embraces its civil duty to help Indianapolis teens gain the skills and knowledge they need to form healthy and safe relationships. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has. And Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force in effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors? Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to call attention to and thank that the women of this council are bringing so much attention to this issue. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for bringing this forward before us tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Very good. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We really appreciate you allowing us to bring attention to this. As someone who used to work at... As someone who used to work at the Julian Center, this is a very important issue. We would see it on a daily basis. They were always at capacity, and it's something that is very important to our city. So thank you very much. We're very excited about this new position that the prosecutor's office has allowed. So thank you very much for bringing attention to this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councilors. And if we don't help educate and address this, it does escalate into domestic violence that they think may be acceptable or something that they are doing, and it's something they're not doing. So we need to educate our young teens now. So thank you so much.
Thank you, councilors. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 22, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposal 22, 23, proposal 3, and 4 altogether. Thank you. Admin and Finance met on January 18th. Proposal 22 approves the mayor's appointment of Taylor Schaefer as the chief deputy, chief deputy mayor. Proposal 23 approves the mayor's appointment of Jeff Bennett, deputy mayor of Community Development. Proposal number 3 approves the mayor's appointment of Judith Thomas as deputy mayor for Neighborhood Engagement. And proposal number 4 approves the appointment of Joe Glass as director of Audit and Performance. All passed out of committee. Nine zero, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 5, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposal number 5 and 6 together. Thank you. Proposal number 5 approves the mayor's appointment of Brian D. Madison as the director of Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number 6 approves the mayor's appointment of Scarlett Andrews as the director of Department of Metropolitan Development. Both proposals passed out of committee at a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All seeing none, we'll now proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 9, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The proposal number 9 for the council is moved by Counselor Potts, seconded by Counselor Larson, and sent proposal number 9 to the full council with due recommendation. Mr. President, the motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. I so move for its adoption, Mr. President.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 10, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposal 10, 11, 12, and 13 together. Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 10 approves the mayor's appointment of Leonette Pierce as the director of Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposal number 11 approves the mayor's appointment of Lauren N. Rodriguez as the director of Office of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 12 approves the mayor's appointment of Ernest V. Malone as chief of the Indianapolis Fire Department. And proposal number 13 approves Chief Taylor as the IFD chief, IFD, IMD, sorry, I lost my place here, Mr. President. Those all came before our committee, Mr. President, and shared information about their goals for 2022 and achievements for 2021. Counsel Oliver moves, seconded by Counselor Mascari. Some proposals to the full council with due pass recommendation. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 14, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 14 approves of the mayor's appointment of Dan Parker as director of the Department of Public Works. Counselor Oliver moves, seconded by Counselor Carlino to send proposal number 14 to the full council with due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 11 to 0. I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Chairman Jackson.
Yes, Mr. President. May I be as the co-sponsor?
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to publicly thank the DPW and Director Parker for the tough and excellent job they did this past weekend. Shoveling and plowing snow in the middle of a snowstorm is an uphill battle, and I thought they performed quite admirably, and I'm proud to have them as our DPW director.
Additional comments from councilors? All seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 39, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 39 appoints Michelle Powell to the Woodruff Place Economic Improvement District Board. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal numbers 51 through 57 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 51, introduced by Counselor Lewis, Adamson, and Jackson, approves the amount, locations, and programmatic operation of certain projects to be funded from the Community Development Grant Fund. Proposal number 52, introduced by Counselors Lewis and Adamson, approves expenditures of $750,000 from the Community Revitalization Enhancement District's Industrial Development Fund for calendar year 2022 for use within the Lafayette Square Community Revitalization Enhancement District. Proposal number 53, introduced by Counselor Osalee, authorizes the removal of property from the consolidated downtown allocation area and creation of the Indy Innovation Apartments LLC allocation area. Proposal number 54, introduced by Counselor Osalee, approves the issuance of developer-backed tax increment finance funds in the amount not to exceed $12,500,000 for the proposed Indy Innovation Apartments, a new mixed-use development including a multifamily housing facility, amenities, and commercial retail space in the previous established 16-tech innovation district, now the proposed separate allocation area to be known as the Indy Innovation Apartments LLC Economic Development Area located at 1350 Waterway Boulevard in District 11. Proposal number 55, introduced by Counselor Osalee, establishes the Stutz One Economic Development and Allocation Area to allow tax increment bond financing for the Stutz One, sorry, mixed-use redevelopment project located at 1060 North Capitol Avenue in District 11, which will include retail and dining space, coworking space, event space, and fitness lifestyle space. Proposal number 56, introduced by Counselor Osalee, approves the issuance of developer-backed tax increment financing bonds in an amount not to exceed $12,321,000 for the proposed Stutz Factory Building redevelopment mixed-use development, including retail and dining space, coworking space, event space, and fitness lifestyle space located at 1060 North Capitol Avenue in District 11, the proposed Stutz One Economic Development and Allocation Areas. Proposal number 57, introduced by Counselor Bane, approves the statement of benefits of Multo Properties LLC and Multo Properties Fund for LLC and applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 58, introduced by Counselor Hart, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, mandates the city departments provide, mandates, sorry, that city departments provide the council with annual accountability reporting on the expenditures of American Rescue Plan Act funding. Proposal number 73, introduced by Counselor Osalee, refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee, reappoints Reverend T.D. Robinson to the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. Proposal numbers 74, 76, and 77 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 74, introduced by Counselors Lewis and Osalee, reappoints Belinda Drake to the Board of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal numbers 76 and 78, both introduced by Counselor Osalee, reappoint Brian Barton and Kathy Good to the Marion County Property Tax, Tax Board of Appeals respectively. Proposal number 78, I'm sorry, 79 and 80 refer to the Parks and Recreation Committee and were introduced by Counselor Osalee. Proposal 79, reappoints Janice Golson, or I'm sorry, appoints Janice Golson Dunlap to the Indianapolis Greenways Development. Proposal number 80, appoints Yancya, I apologize, Tozado to the Indianapolis Greenways Development Committee. Proposal number 81, introduced by Counselor Osalee, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, reappoints Barbara Howard to the Alcoholic Beverage Board of Marion County. Proposal numbers 83 and 84, I'm sorry, 82 and 83 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal 82, introduced by Counselor Osalee, appoints Curtis Bixby to the Emergency Services Agency Board. Proposal number 83, introduced by Counselor Robinson, appoints Danielle Smith to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications, I'm sorry, the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal, proposal numbers 59 through 72, 2022, are all rezonings that were certified to the council for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on January 18th and January 27th, 2022. If no council wishes to call down any of these proposals for reconsideration, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Hearing no motions, proposal numbers 59 through 72, 2022, will now pass into law. There is no business under Special Orders Public Hearing. There is no business under Special Orders Unfinished Business. And so now, we will now proceed to Special Orders Final Adoption. And this next item on our agenda is proposal number 339, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 39 authorizes bus and turn lanes and amends the code to make various stop changes in chapter, chapters 1, I'm sorry, 441 and 621 regarding traffic as part of the Indigo Super Stops, a component of the Marion County Transit Plan. Counselor Jones moves, seconded by Counselor McCormick, to amend proposal number 339, and that motion carried by a vote of 11 to 0. Counselor McCormick then moved, seconded by Counselor Carlino, to send proposal 339 to the full council with a due pass as amended recommendation, and that motion was carried by a vote of 11 to 0. And I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries, 20 to 5. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 15, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 15, 17, 18, and 19 together. Thank you. Proposal number 15 authorizes no turn-on-red restrictions at Michigan and Oriental Streets in District 17. Proposal number 17 authorizes no turn-on-red restrictions at Washington Street and Ritter Avenue in District 12. Proposal number 18 authorizes turn-on-red restrictions at 46th Street and Central Avenue in District 7. And proposal number 19 authorizes turn-on-red restrictions at 86th Street and Nora Commons in District 2. Counselor Boots moves, seconded by Counselor McCormick, to send proposals number 15, 17, 18, and 19 to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 11 to 0. And I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding proposal 19 in District 2, I thank Counselor Barth for co-sponsoring this resolution. There was tragically an accident on 86th Street near, in this area, where a bicyclist was struck by a vehicle that went through a red light. And so Counselor Barth, along with some of our colleagues, met with the bicycling community in Indianapolis, and this was a request that they asked of us. So I thank Director Parker and DPW for their leadership in addressing this and look forward to supporting this proposal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, councilor. Additional comments? Yes, Counselor Larison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to just thank everyone at DPW for their assistance over in Irvington, where proposal 17 addresses red light, red light restriction, again, dealing with a tragic accident there. And this is one of many efforts that DPW is taking to help address the issues. Again, thank you to Director Parker and everyone at DPW.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also appreciate DPW's support on proposal 18, which thankfully is not in response to anything that has happened, but rather dangerous conditions around IPS School 70. That's a residential neighborhood with a very successful school there at School 70 with a lot of families walking to IPS School 70 day in and day out. And so this turn-on-red restriction is aiming to help with calming traffic and making the commute by foot much safer for all the families at IPS School 70. I'd also like to note that IPS Commissioner Hawkins and I worked on this closely, and it's just one piece of a lot of improvements we'd like to see at the intersection of 46th and Central to support IPS School 70. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Counselors Gray and Jackson. All right, motion carries, 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 20. My apologies. Proposal number 16. Refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 16 authorizes intersection controls at Southeastern Avenue and Thompson Road in District 25. And that motion carried by, with a due pass recommendation by a vote of 11 to 0. And I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to 0. Motion carries, 25 to zero. Now, may I go to Proposal Number 20? Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 20, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, I took them all out of order and I mixed them all up there for you. Proposal Number 20...oh, with consent, I'd like to take Proposals Number 20 and 21 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal Number 20 modifies the parking meter boundaries near College Avenue and Westfield Boulevard in District 2. And Proposal Number 21 establishes parking meter zones near Belle Fontaine Street and Massachusetts Avenue in District 17. Counselor Boots moves, seconded by Counselor Gray, to send Proposal Number 21 and 20 and 21 to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 11 to zero, and ISO move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick comment regarding Proposal 20 in District 2. This is just one part of a very large and exciting project to reconstruct and revamp Broad Ripple Avenue, and I just wanted to thank DPW for their engagement with local area leaders in working to figure out where these parking meters are going to be moved throughout the community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to zero. There is no business under Special Service District Councils. There is, however, one item I think left that we have missed out on from our last meeting. There's no business under new business, but I think that we might have overlooked one of our councilors for a perfect attendance record, and if we might be able to address that this evening.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I was told that we were going to acknowledge her at the next council meeting because I don't have a certificate. Oh, now they have a certificate. Well, okay.
Thank you, Madam Leader.
And so, we did miss one of our colleagues at the last meeting. Madam Chair, Counselor Jackson, if you'd come down and let us celebrate you. Thank you so much for your perfect attendance and all that you do on behalf of your constituents. Would you like to say a few words?
It's hard to get perfect attendance, so thank you guys for the honor. I think I clocked...I was the second highest on the dim side next to Aali, Counselor Aali Brown, so it's an honor to work with you all. And in addition, I don't think the folks at home know, but in addition to these council meetings, we attend community meetings, HOA meetings, community events, anything our constituents want. We meet with mayor's people and those folks too, so this, too many, is not significant. But for me, because many times I have to attend a conference that we didn't have...it was virtual this year, and it's a mandatory conference for my job, so I got to be able to get perfect attendance in 2021. So, this is an honor for me, so thank you.
This next item on our agenda is Announcements and Adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counselor Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by Counselor Jones in memory of Craig Olson, by Counselor Gray in memory of Forrest Jones, Judge Webster Brewer, Lloyd Lyons, Todd Jones, and Reverend Calvin Kelly, by Counselors Bain, Hart, Anay, Dilk, and Maury in memory of Carl Brizzy. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow councilors. I further request that the motion be made part of the permanent record of this body and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the request is so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you, councilors.
Good work. Nice, fast one.